This is our junior workshop and it's, those of you know who attend our meetings regularly, that the workshop is an opportunity for us to go through items on an agenda that will be presented to the board next Tuesday evening for our board voting meeting, but we take this opportunity to go into much more depth and detail. It's also an opportunity for us to hear different presentations and this evening we have both recognitions and presentations that we're going to be exposed to. So, we're pleased to see a big crowd out here this evening and welcome everybody who's been here for the first time or if they're in groups of visitors here, welcome. We're going to start off this evening with a recognition, Trout in the Classroom with Mrs. Sandra Groff, our third grade teacher at Awatton Creek Elementary and her students. Drop. Mrs. Groff.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Groff and I teach third grade at Awatton Creek Elementary School. I also have a few of my students here tonight, Grace Campleen and Tommy Whitman. I would like to tell you about a new program I introduced to my students this year called Trout in the Classroom. Trout in the Classroom is a program in which students in grades three to 12 learn about cold water conservation while raising brook trout from eggs to fingerlings in a classroom aquarium. This program is possible through the partnership between Pennsylvania Council of Trout Unlimited and the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission. These groups work together to provide curriculum resources, a workshop, brook trout eggs, and food. Last summer, my Trout in the Classroom experience began with going to a workshop at Penn State, picking up the equipment at that fish place in Lancaster County, reading through the resource guide many times and thinking about what activities I would do with my students during the year. In September, I worked with our partner from Topol Hopkin Trout Unlimited to get our 55-gallon tank set up and ready to go. On October 31st, yes, on Halloween, our eggs arrived. What an exciting day between the arrival of our eggs and a Halloween party in the afternoon. We counted and separated our live dead eggs. ... support and the support of this program. Be sure that this program was prepped for two fish. I can happily say I did better than two fish. I also need to recognize and thank my husband Randy Groff for all his help and support this year, from cutting insulation, making two egg baskets, bringing me to school during vacations, snow days, to dressing in his fishing gear and actually catching an adult trout on our release day to show my kids. We did name our daughter Brooke for a reason. Please enjoy my classroom video that shares our experiences this year of learning about brook trout and our release date. Count our live and our dead eggs. Okay, so here we go. One, two, three, four, five. That's five. They all look live?
Yes.
Five. One second. Oh my goodness, second, even closer. Kind of. You got a little bit of it? Another time, because I can't. My goodness, watch our little fishes. They'll be all alive. All right. Yeah, I don't know if they're all alive. Some of them are hard to tell. Yeah. Those of you that are just making fun, like the bags. And how do we tell which eggs were dead eggs? Okay, and were all of them eggs? I know. You can move out. All right? And I'm going to come here and I'm going to get close-ups of each of these. (Music) My box, if it's alive, we got 212, if it's dead, we got 66. We have our live eggs in the tank, into the egg basket, and we're going to, we have, we have water from our tank and then some from the bag which the eggs came in. And we're going to acclimate the a, the water so that it's the same temperature as we want it to be. Is the, you want it to be the same? We need it to be the same as the tank so that they get used to it and they can live in it. And do you know that what the water temperature is going to be? It should... Can you look at the temperature gauge over there? What does it say? 53 degrees. 53 degrees. (Music) Eggs are alive in our school and are called live eggs. Eggs are artificial. Eggs are fragile, fast, 15 days. Eggs are dead if... What color were that you said were live? Alive, pink, orange. A living stage, also known as saccharine stage. A newly hatched trout is still attached to its eating the egg sacs as food. The yolk sac serves as a mini lunch bag. It contains vitamins, minerals, and proteins. Swim up fry stage. Swim up fry has fully thickened their yolk sacs. Once the yolk sacs are thickened, trout will begin to search for food. A fly is a hatched trout, previously a swimmer fly. It is one inch or less in length and has learned to search for food and began eating. At this stage, you will begin to see dark vertical lines on their sides called paw marks. Is two to three inches in length are called fingerlings. They continue to develop lines called paw marks. These lines help to camouflage the young trout and protect them from predators. Adult brook trout, Pennsylvania sea fish is the brook trout. Brook trout are members of the trout family. They live in small, cold water streams. They can range in size, five inches to eight inches long. At this time, do you want to say something, like something you learned or something you enjoyed? This is Grace Campleen.
My favorite thing about the Trout in the Classroom was when we first stopped up on Halloween Day, we were sorting the live eggs from the dead. It was also really surprising when we saw there something already hatched.
He talks all the time. I'd just like again, say thank you. It was an awesome experience and we're going to try 420 fish and share. Better than two. So, thank you. Any questions?
I just think you did a really nice job on the video as well, but congratulations and I think that was pretty cool.
Great experience, the kids loved it.
And thanks, kids, for being part of it and for coming out this evening. Our next recognition is the Envirathon team with Mrs. Gretchen Hess, our Envirathon advisor.
I'm Gretchen Hess. I teach seventh grade life science down at the junior high. This is almost a third of our Envirathon team that could make it here tonight. This is my third year of coaching the Envirathon team and this year, we participate. So, we took six teams of five to the competition on May 8th and we placed out of 28 teams. We had nineteen, two of our teams tied for 13, we had six, fifth, and then we brought home our separate place trophy. At the competition, students compete in, it's five categories, but there's four that we can study for ahead of time. So, the students start meeting in January and we meet two to three times a month to study and prepare for those categories. They are forestry, aquatics, wildlife, and soils. And then at the day of the competition, there's a fun category that's a surprise when we get there, what they contest us on. And our team that placed second also had the high score. They give awards for the high score in each of those categories. So, we also got the high score in soil. Right? Yeah. And I'll let, do you two just want to say your name and what grade? Because we range from, we allow students from Reifden to come up to the junior high and they get to compete with us. So, we're sixth through eighth grade. So, you just want to say your name and what grade.
I'm sixth grade.
Avery, eighth grade.
Dr. Allison, third.
Teresa, sixth grade.
Dustin Nestor, seventh grade.
Dylan, seventh grade.
You're eighth grade.
Do you have any questions for us? We just, we appreciate all the support that you do in sponsoring this program and making sure that you participate in getting us there, getting us back. We do have, we coordinate with Burks County Conservation District and they come out at least once a month to one of our practices and they'll go over each of the categories with us. So, they come and help us prepare and study for that.
Do you see more students getting involved over the years?
Since I've taken over, it has gotten much bigger. Now, this year, we actually had a little bit of a drop because last year we had 40, that was a lot. So, this year, we had 30, but it's more than what it had been. In the past, they'd take one or two teams. So, we had eight and then now this year, six that we are taking. So, it's definitely bigger than it has been.
Congratulations. Can you give us an example of one of the activities that you do?
Do you guys want to share?
Maybe something one of the more interesting things that we kind of...
The second place trophy winner. What do you guys do?
Do you have a question?
To get the second place?
So, in wildlife, there's something called animal jeopardy and they'll give you clues about an animal. Like, let's say for a striped stomp, they'll say it lives in caves, it has a city dwelling cousin, it eats fruits, berries, and nuts. What is the, and you choose from a list of answers and striped stumps will do up to them.
And they have other ones where they have to identify tracks, they have to identify pelts, skulls. For aquatics, they can identify fish. For forestry, they have to be able to calculate, measure trees and calculate wood foot. So, we do an activity outside of the junior high where we take our billboard sticks out and we calculate all of that. So, it depends on the category, but there's different...
I'm a bird watcher. Are there any bird experts here on your team?
We do not have third Envirathon. There were some birds that would be in with wildlife, but it wasn't one of their main causes. They have to know all the state specialties.
Is this a regional competition or is it...
Junior high, it's only regional. At the senior high level, they can go to states. Only the first place team goes to states. I'm not sure if it's the junior high team this year, but I do know that only tends to always take that one and I would love to take that one just once.
It was your challenge, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for coming out this evening and congratulations, team. Okay, we'll move on to our Science Olympiad team and Mr. Walt Kiebler, who's our Science Olympiad coach. Fifty percent? Sorry?
Thank you for having us. Good evening. More than 25 years ago, before the phrase or whatever you want to call it, catchphrase, buzzword stem was ever created, there was Science Olympiad. This particular event has 23 other events within it, ranging from biology, chemistry, aerospace science events, physics events, inquiry of science. We call some of them building events and, you know, it's been in existence for more than a quarter of a century. We went to, we always go to the Burks County Science Olympiad, which is invitational, that's in January. This team, the group you're seeing here, is mostly the senior high team. There are a few freshmen here. The freshmen actually participate in what we call the B division, which is with the eighth and seventh graders. And then we go to the Burks County Olympiad, which this year, we placed second in the county and, or excuse me, first in the county, second overall. It's kind of confusing about how we keep score because we have teams from outside the county come. We went to our regional, which is in March, which is at Coates Town University again, and we were fifth out of about a field of 30 teams. And because we qualified as one of the top six teams, we went to the state where you have 36 teams in both the C and the B division. So, there's 36 senior high teams, 36 junior high teams. The competition is very, very stiff and we're, I want to say, we're honored. Our goal is to always get to the state competition and we made that goal this year. And the states, we had a little bit of a rough day, but we had a good time as well. So, I'm going to let these guys introduce themselves, who they are. Do you want to tell them your name, what grade you're in, and tell them what you're representing there with either your medal or ribbon? Do you guys want the microphone?
I'm Min and I have, I'm from ninth grade and I have a medal going to Solar System.
I'm Taylor. I'm in ninth grade and I have medals for Solar System and Rocks and Minerals.
I'm Angela. I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Nicole. I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Evan. I'm in 10th grade. This is the medal for second place at the regional for the Towers event. This red ribbon is second place for Towers at the county event and this yellow is third place for Dynamic Planet.
Hi, I'm Nicholas. I'm in 10th grade. This is the regional or the invitational for this machine. This one is the state medal for this machine and this one is the regional medal for this machine.
Hi, I'm Sid. This is a regional medal. I'm an 11th grader and this is the regional medal for Mission Impossible. I was partnered with Nick for it. This is the state medal for it and I don't have my ribbons for it, but I got one, two first place medals, one for Mission Impossible, one for one about diseases, and then a second place ribbon for one about microbes.
I'm Chris. I'm in 10th grade and I have ribbons for Dynamic Planet and Mousetrap Vehicle.
So, the machine you're seeing here is not only took first place at the county event, took first place at the regional event, took first place at the state. And state competition, there's a team from down near Philadelphia called Harrington and they are very, very good. I guess they're kind of like the, as Gretchen said, the only, you know, for Envirathon, they're the dominating team. And just a quick funny story, when Nick and Sid were going down for their first place in the state competition for their Mission Possible, there were kids that were whispering to them, "They beat Harrington, oh my God, they beat Harrington." So, that was really something for them to take first in the state. Unfortunately, in Science Olympiad, if you medal in something, you cannot go on to the next level unless the team qualifies. I'd love to see what this thing does at the national level. I really would because if it beat Harrington, it's got to be national worthy. Before Nick, we're going to... Questions for Nick, for you guys to hear answers for. This is a root Goldberg. It's called the Mission Possible and I always say, and this is no offense, but anybody can build a root Goldberg anywhere and have it go over a room. You've seen that on probably YouTube and things like that. Our Science Olympiad, you have to build a root Goldberg that this box is...
Sixty by sixty centimeters.
Sixty by sixty centimeters, okay? So, you can't go outside the box, okay? The whole thing is sponsored by, I think JPL and one of the other aerospace companies. And the idea of it is, when you send something into space and it has to activate, you can't go up there and fix it. I mean, the Hubble, they could go fix back in 93, but most things, they can't fix. And when you send something up and it doesn't activate, it is one gigantic piece of space junk. So, that's the idea behind this. It's got to work the first time it activates. How many pulley systems do we have? Two pulley systems? How many chemical reactions are taking place? How many battery operated things do we have in there?
All of them.
All of them, okay? My personal favorite in there, there's a device that has to flip a quarter. What's it have to do?
Flip a quarter from heads to tails.
Every single time. And it's so simple and it's really cool. Is it kind of ready to go, Nick?
Yeah.
I don't know. You can't invite everyone up here, but I didn't know if board members would like to come up and take a closer look? The kids can come up? Sure. That'd be great. So, if you're ready, go ahead. You want, the start activation is what, Nick?
You're pulling the magnet.
Wait, we have some more coming up. Come on, guys.
You go all the way in the front, right side of their insert.
It's not pull a magnet.
And...
And uh, the machine, the ball is going to start the entire machine.
And then the last thing it says is.
It's gonna verbally say at the end, so.
Whenever you're ready, alright.
So now sand is being dropped into a sand timer. Sand is being dropped into a sand timer, which we had to meet a um, so it just finished. Pulley is going up. Other pulley is going up. Uh, the temperature on there will start to drop, um, hopefully. Okay, there it goes. So water is being mixed with the chemical and it's dropping the temperature. And once the gauge reaches, uh, reaches a low enough temperature, the balloon will begin to blow up. Blow out. And that's it.
That was a gold medal at the state competition. Do you, any of the board members have any questions about this or anything else, any of the events that we do?
So how long did it take for you to build this?
Five months. Five months.
Five months. And how much did it cost?
Zero dollars.
So you had all that laying around your house?
Kind of.
So you go through neighbor praying, didn't you?
So how did you get the idea for this?
So there's a rules packet and um, it tells us like stuff that we have to do for points. So every single one of the things that we have in here, it, the rules told us to do. So we had to, the only thing that we really had to think about was how it put them in order to make them fit in the sixty by sixty. But other than that, they gave us the information that we needed to actually make everything in there. We just need to figure out how to do it.
So you can't just decide, "I want to do this and this and this." It's not kind of freelance. It's, there are guidelines. And you get points for, for everything. There again, you know, it's, there are constraints. And I know the first time another staff member saw this and they said to me, they're like, "Well, you know, they're doing this down in the check ad lab." And I said, "Yeah, that's great, but are they doing it this way?" Because again, you're launching payload in space, there's only so much room in a rocket. And when it comes out, it's got to open up or it's one big piece of space junk. So it's got to work. There's nobody up there that can touch it or move it and kids can touch it during the competition, but that's a penalty. So ours ran flawlessly all three times.
And when you guys were putting it together, how many revisions or is it one time done and over to get? Can you describe the uh, the chemical reaction? You know, the, you know, what, what happened when that uh, club for that balloon blew up?
So we had a motor here with a, a winch and a string on it. So it pulled a magnet connected to the underside of the lid, which um, would drop when it was pulled away. It would drop baking soda into vinegar. So that reaction creates carbon dioxide and the balloon was just blown up and uh, this little lever and that continued it.
Okay, baking soda.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are, there are certain limitations to what we can use. Um, certain things that are like flammable, no good, uh, batteries have limits to fourteen point four volts, correct? Uh, let's see, I'm thinking there's ain't, no, nothing that's incendiary. Can't have uh, you know, matches or anything, no pyrotechnics. They're all not able to be, it'd be easier to do some things that those, like we're not allowed to. But again, we've got some strict rules to follow and strict space constraints and, and I think this just got about every point we could.
Except for fifty.
Except for what?
Fifty.
Except for fifty.
So you're choosing on your next exam?
I, I don't know if they'll have the next year, but if.
They change the events per year to year. Yeah, some events uh, are always there every year and like, for example, there's always an astronomy event. And the flavor of it might be galaxies one year, evolution one, stellar evolution one year, um, you know, something like that, exoplanets. And other events kind of come and go. So this event uh, usually is around for a couple of years. It was here last year, right Nick?
If they run it again, they'll likely change all the things so that they would not be able to reuse the same.
Yes, and you gotta, they'll make the box bigger, smaller.
Change all the.
Say you can't use this type of reaction. The same thing is true for all these events. Um, they, they change up the rules for, you know, say Rocks and Minerals, Disease Detective or our. Mousetrap, or Chug's Dimension, can be considered, or the tower will be a different size and a different uh, you know, different efficiency you have to consider, so.
Very impressive.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to everybody who participated. Excellent job. Thanks to all of you.
We appreciate your continued support for this program. And now we're gonna go get ice cream.
Oh! Come back, come back for everybody.
Yeah, that's gonna be a tough and a good follow-up here.
Wait, show me up, nice.
Our next um, our next uh, item on the agenda is a, is a program report. And uh, Dr. Winters, our assistant superintendent, will be giving us an overview of virtual programs um, earlier this evening. Dr. Winters gave us um, just a little bit of a highlight of what he's gonna present this evening, so looking forward to the uh, full report, so. Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Winters. So as passionate as I am about virtual programs, there's no way I can compete with that. That was pretty impressive. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight about virtual programs. This is a topic that, that I'm very, very passionate about. And I think one that, as we think about what education's gonna look like, even next year, two years, five years down the road, one that becomes very important and something that we need to be aware of. And it really all starts with the idea of kind of changing the model of what education looks like. And one of the things you realize, if you pay attention to the world around you, is that every other aspect of our lives is customized. For those of you that drink coffee, you can go to Starbucks and you can get exactly what you want. You can even order it online. You can pay for it with an app. All of that's done. For those of you that like to buy music online, iTunes will let you create playlists and buy any kind of music you want to buy at any point in time. You can get dinner at Mo's, right Hunter, using apps and everything else. So, you know, at, every, everything else we do in our world is customized, but yet our model of education continues to be one that is more traditional in nature. And so what I'm proposing is that we look at how we're educating our students and start to move in the direction of how can we educate them anytime, anywhere, at any pace, in a more customized approach. So I began to do an assessment and look at where we are as a district. And as I mentioned at the curriculum committee meeting, um, certainly very appreciative of all the foundational work that has been done by Dr. Miller and her um, technology team looking at online learning. Several years back, um, there was kind of a directive, uh, at that point in time, um, along the lines of, we need to stop the bleeding, we need to get kids back from cyber charter school, we need to reduce that cost burden on the district. And at the time, um, that was addressed in two ways. The district partnered with the Brandywine Virtual Academy through Chester County Intermediate Unit. And we partnered with a product called VLN, Virtual Learning Network Partners. Both of those, um, I guess items, if you will, allowed us to have a supported cyber school on site to meet some of the needs of our students that were leaving and also enabled us to offer courses to some special populations, students that are emotional support at the high school level. The piece that they didn't allow for was the opportunity to allow our teachers to teach the content and be more intimately involved in that process. And so in sitting down, talking with Dr. Miller, understanding, you know, where we were, I started sharing with her, I have some thoughts, some ideas, I think what we could do to, you know, make things more customized. And came up with a plan, which is what you see timeline wise on the screen. The first group that I shared this with was the high school teachers, those that were interested at an early dismissal day at the end of April. Had around thirty high school teachers that were there, a lot of buzz surrounding the idea of how can we, you know, build upon, grow what we're doing virtually. And one of the things that I talked about that day is that if we're going to take the current virtual academy we have and make some tweaks to it and move forward with some different things, we need to move slowly and we need to do it the right way and make sure we get input from all stakeholders. Teachers, board members, administrators, students, community members. And so my first, you know, belief in this timeline is that moving into next year, next year is a planning year. I'm not proposing that we change anything for eighteen nineteen. That we keep Brandywine Virtual Academy through CCIU, we keep VLN partners, the small, the handful of teachers we have that are doing some pilot courses with VLN, you know, we leave things status quo. And then we use next year to begin planning for what would this new approach look like at the high school level? Starting small, senior high only, looking at a virtual academy option for kids and what I call a senior option where seniors could take one online course as part of their schedule and then perhaps go to the library during that block to teach that course. And then begin to develop courses using Schoology. Schoology is a learning management system we've invested in as a district. Our teachers are using it. They feel strongly about it. And so trying to build more courses on Schoology and becoming less reliant on the digital content that is out there. So that heading into nineteen twenty, we could begin using our own teachers, building more Schoology courses and then build it out from there. Twenty twenty-one, look at bringing in junior high and then eventually getting down to five, six and K four. So one of the pieces that would be part of this planning in eighteen nineteen is the digital content piece. And there's two different components when we talk digital content. There's the Schoology component. Um, how do we build more courses on Schoology? Well, why is this important? Because what starts to happen as virtual academies start to expand is students want to try it. It becomes the new exciting thing. They're like, "Yeah, Mom, Dad, I want to do virtual academy." And they do it till like November, realize that they miss their friends or they miss some of the experiences associated with being in the building and then they say, "I want to return to the building." Well, you have to ensure if you're gonna do that, that the curriculum lines up. So that if they ended online biology in unit two, that when they step back into the building, it lines up. If we're building courses on Schoology and we're the teacher of record for the other digital content we're using, then we can make sure those Schoology courses are exactly lined up. And for the digital content that we rely on until we get all of our catalog built in Schoology, because that's a five, six year process. You don't create thirty, forty courses in a year. We choose a program, the digital content wise, that aligns with our curriculum and is one that gives our teachers flexibility to add things in, take things out, that type of thing. Right now, there is definitely some interest at the high school level in building Schoology courses. I've heard from Spanish teachers, I've heard from an art teacher, I've heard from science teachers that have all said to me, you know, "Patrick, if we get the go-ahead on this, I want to build my course on Schoology." So the interest level is there. The other piece that goes with that is vetting some of the digital content. Right now, as I said, we're using the VLN partners piece and there are other digital content providers out there, okay? Um, s- some of what I've heard anecdotally is that VLN may not perfectly line up curriculum wise with the courses that we're using long-term. And so I would want to spend some time next year looking at some of the different digital content providers that are out there. I listed a couple up there that I'm not, that I'm familiar with. That is not an exhaustive list. Um, there are digital content providers all over the place that we could do webinars with and I would lean on that, you know, group of folks that are interested in, in being part of the planning to look at that, to vet it and to make recommendations. But the bottom line is that whatever content we go with, it needs to be one that allows us to use our own teachers. So that guiding coalition, group of teachers, administrators, tech coaches, and there are some things that we're gonna need to look at in eighteen nineteen. We have to look at the attendance piece. For our kids that are doing the virtual academy, how are we gonna track it? Are we gonna use screen time? Are we gonna use assignment completion? Are we gonna use hours weekly or some variation of the three? Technology, okay? If you're gonna offer a virtual academy, I mean, all of our students have a laptop as part of one-to-one, so that piece is taken care of. But how are we gonna service them for our students that are doing virtual academy at home? Are we gonna send tech support, you know, out to the home? What's that gonna look like? Are we gonna provide printers? What about internet reimbursement? Do we offer internet reimbursement to families that are doing online from home or don't we? The other cyber charter schools are, but something that that guiding coalition would have to look at and make a recommendation on. In terms of space, in that first year, do we find a location in the high school, since we're just focusing on high school, for those particular students to work? Or as Dr. Phillips and I have, have spoken about, there's a space on the bottom floor here at Loush that we could, you know, convert into a virtual classroom where kids could come and work. There are some upfront costs. As I said, you've got the digital content piece. There's some PD that would need to be done for the teachers. We could certainly use uh, Dan and Missy and leverage some of that expertise, but there, there would be some PD, technology, personnel piece, which I'll get into here in a few minutes. There's the, there's the piece with the teachers association and putting an appropriate MOU into place, looking at what does an online caseload look like for a teacher? What about giving them an online teaching line? If they don't have a teaching line, do we pay them a stipend? If so, what does a stipend agreement look like? And then the rollout, you know, using that time to determine how are we gonna roll this out to the larger high school faculty and staff? Through department meetings, through principal PLCs, through building capacity with that guiding team. All of these would be things that during eighteen nineteen, that team would look at and would make determinations and make recommendations of how we'd want to handle that moving forward into nineteen twenty. In terms of staffing, this is a piece that has to be looked at very closely. That team would have to look at with high school administration. Looking at the, looking, uh, working with the assistant principals and also, you know, the, the new principal coming in at the senior high. What kind of availability do we have with senior high teachers in terms of schedule and teaching lines? Are our numbers such that we could create lines and teacher schedules and have somebody be an online teacher of record for a certain subject area? Um, you know, do, do we have faculty and staff available to monitor that virtual academy classroom? In other words, if we do it in the high school, are there people during the day that can, um, you know, be down there to monitor the students? I, I talked about the stipend piece already. The Schoology courses, you need instructional designers to design those courses. There's a cost associated with that. You're, you know, you're paying folks out, you know, at some sort of hourly rate to design those courses. My experience has been, it takes roughly a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five hours to design a good online course. You can do the math. There's a cost that is, um, you know, tied up there. Um, and, and also, um, you know, support personnel, school counselors, technology, that kind of thing. The one thing that I've earned going through this process, um, where I worked previously, is that, um, until it gets, you know, very, very big in terms of, you know, teachers, support staff, that type of thing, you find ways to leverage the existing personnel and try to keep costs to a minimum. In, in other words, if a student's an online learner at the high school, they're still part of the caseload of the school counselor that would have that part of the alphabet. If, you know, whatever tech support we're providing for families, we use our existing tech department personnel to. we use our existing tech department personnel to, you know, support, you know, that way. You know, in terms of teachers, we, you know, we get creative with scheduling and try to free up teachers to have an online teaching line that's, you know, part of their, part of their teaching. So, talked about some of those budget costs that, that would be potential issues in, you know, Year One. And, you know, when I say, you know, Year One, I'm talking about nineteen twenty. Because again, remember, we're, we're saying eighteen nineteen is a planning year. And then, the administrator options. And I know that this has been the one topic that several of you have asked questions about, rightfully so. And as I was planning and putting together my remarks for this evening, one of the things that I wanted to come up with is I wanted to be able to give this board different options. Okay? While I have a preference, and I will talk about that in a minute, all three of those options can work as we move forward. One option, which is the one that I would prefer, would be to hire a virtual programs administrator that can shepherd the programs in the district, that can work with myself, Dr. Miller, and that as that guiding coalition moves next year and looks at those different pieces, that takes the leadership and takes the helm to guide that decision-making, and so that when nineteen twenty rolls around, that, you know, we're ready to start, and we have somebody that can be overseeing those day-to-day operations, as opposed to, you know, waiting to hire somebody right at the beginning of nineteen twenty and trying to, you know, get them up to speed. I will say that if we went with Option One, I think there are some creative things that we could do with that particular position to where it wouldn't solely be a virtual programs administrator position. One of the things that, that has come out at different board meetings is that, what I'm going to call kind of that PR piece, some of those pieces that, you know, were, were addressed when Mr. Kramer, Dr. Mr. Kramer, Dr. Kramer was here. And so, we could, in the creation of that position, if we went that direction, give that person some public relations responsibilities as well in terms of the social media presence, helping to design a brand, you know, for Exeter, marketing that brand, that type of thing, which I know has been something that has come up. The other piece that you potentially could weave into that position are some of the safety responsibilities, as safety, you know, becomes a bigger concern in school districts. So, just some food for thought, that if we went that direction, we could add some additional responsibilities for that individual to better justify the cost, if you will, for something along those lines. A second option would be, you know, we, we do have teachers at the senior high that have administrative certifications, that may very well have a passion for online learning and taking this to the next level. We could look at the schedules of some of those teachers, and see if we could do like a, you know, a couple of teaching lines, and then the rest of the day, give that teacher time to work with the committee to shepherd the program. That would be a possibility if we went that direction. Then, you know, the board could, you know, kind of come to an agreement in terms of a number to where we might say, okay, when the virtual program, number-wise, gets to a certain threshold, I just put one hundred there, that may not, you know, there may be a different number we want to look at, then, kind of saying, at that point in time, we'll come back together and revisit then, making, shifting that position to an act number three position, at which point in time, you know, we have to replace that position, just like. Third option, there are districts that do this. They add coordinator virtual program responsibilities to an assistant principal at the high school level. They add it to that individual's job description, and they pay some sort of stipend for the extra work that is required. I will tell you, I did that in my previous job. Yes, we made it work. It was very difficult, because what happens is that the responsibilities of the assistant principal are very vast, and so, when you're trying to get something new, like a virtual academy, up and running, and you're doing it as an assistant principal, inevitably, that's one more ball that you're juggling, and so, it can impact how timely you can get discipline referrals done. It can impact how quickly you can get teacher evaluations. So, it, it, it does spread that individual more thin. But, all of these things could be done, and I guess what I'm, you know, saying to you as a board is that I can make either of these three things work. I'm very passionate about virtual programs. For me, big picture, is that we do it right, and that, you know, we put ourselves in a position to, you know, continue to build upon the foundation that's there, and have a program that not only will continue to stop the leaking and prevent kids from going to cyber, will also enable us to create more customized learning opportunities for our kids. I was talking with Jasmine earlier this evening, and I shared this story with her. I was in the high school, I was visiting a teacher classroom, and the teacher whose classroom I was in said, "This is Dr. Winters, our assistant superintendent. He's really, really passionate about online learning." And this one, her eyes got real big, and she's like, "Really? Can you please put something like this, you know, into place? I'm going to be a senior in two years, and I would just love to have the flexibility to come to school and take one or two classes in the building, and spend the rest of my day at home, online." And, you know, ultimately, when you do something like this, you create those opportunities for kids. And ultimately, you know, that's, that's what we want, want the best opportunities for kids. So, in terms of immediate next steps, that guiding coalition is forming. I've got about seven or eight teachers that have already reached out to me and said, "Hey, Patrick, when this committee comes together," like, count me in, you know, I'm rep. And I'm looking to see, I think, some of those guys are in the audience, Pam's there, Chris's there, Michelle's there. All three of them have said to me, "Patrick, you know, we want you to go. I want to be a part of this process," which is awesome. Same with instructional designers. I have teachers that want to take a course on School-Age, they're just waiting for me to say, you know, "Let's do it." And the other thing that I've shared with, with the high school folks is that I think it's really powerful for teachers, if they can get to do a site visit and go somewhere that is doing it, that it will be very candid, very honest. Alanco, where I used to work, you guys are aware of that, but they, you know, I, I've already reached out to them. I've said, you know, "If we decide as a district to move in this direction, can I bring some folks in the fall, and can you be very honest and open with them about, you know, challenges that, you know, were faced, and how you overcame them? The, you know, the association MOU piece, and all those different things." And they're willing to do that, and I think, you know, while I can stand up and be very passionate about how much I love this, teachers want to hear from teachers. They want to hear from other teachers that have taught online, and what that looks like, and what the challenges are. Guidance counselors want to hear from other guidance, sorry, school counselors, caught myself. School counselors want to hear from other school counselors about the challenges of scheduling in an online realm. And so, you know, that, that piece is there. So, what I'm looking for, you know, from the board is which direction you would like me to go in in terms of the administrator option, so that I can then begin the next steps of getting that guiding coalition together and moving forward. Thank you. Questions, concerns, comments?
Is there any hope? Well, let me ask it this way. If we were going to approve a full-time administrator's position, which is currently set for approval on the budget, at what point would you look to hire them? And then, before that point, what would the staff accommodation for this program be? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I do, I, I do. I, I think, you know, where I would be is that I would probably, you know, look to post that position probably sometime January-ish, and in the beginning of the year. I feel as though the combination of myself and Dr. Miller, and the guiding coalition that I talked about, can begin the process of meeting, starting to look at some content providers, doing a site visit to see how other places are doing it, and then if we had that position posted in January, and could get somebody on board, then we've got the winter and the springtime, you know, for that individual to work and, and help with the transition. That's.
The only caveat is it might be a little sooner only because of the sixty-day rule.
Oh, well, that's true.
So, it might be a little early, maybe late November, early December, but still, in around that timeframe.
Can you explain the sixty-day rule? I feel like I understand what you're saying.
Anytime we offer a job to another public education staff member, the district can hold them for sixty days.
Okay. You'd want them to start in January, that's why we'd like them to do it.
Well, January, February.
Yeah.
There are times when you came call superintendents, and we've done it, or vice versa, I've done it, and they've done it to us, and say, "Can you help us out here? We really want this person to go forward." Quite honestly, I had a conversation with, with Dr. Winters' superintendent. And if it can be made to happen sooner, it can be. There are times when they're, they're in a critical position, that they really cannot leave them to go for sixty days.
You know, and, and I would kind of, you know, view this position as like a, kind of like an entry-level administrative position. Like, I would view it as a coordinator position, not a supervisor position. And, and I would see it potentially as an opportunity for maybe, you know, somebody in the teacher ranks here or elsewhere that has an admin cert that wants to get their foot in the water in terms of getting administrative experience, but maybe in lieu of being an assistant principal, would like to, you know, get some experience with this piece, you know, instead. So.
And that would change.
And if it was a teacher in our district, again, we'd have to go through the whole process to hire someone, and then there's sixty, there's got to be some time to, to get it done.
And that, that entry level versus supervisor level would change the compensation consideration that we're currently looking at significantly.
Yeah, yeah, it would.
Okay. Another question?
I'm not sure significantly, but yes, it would, it could change it.
I mean, I think it probably depends on, you know, level of experience. Like, in other words, you know, if it's a teacher, like, let's just say hypothetically, it's a teacher from Exeter that, you know, is, you know, come, is, is, you know, applying and wants to step into that position, where are they on the salary scale, you know, in the future?
This would become a twelve-month position.
You know, it's twelve months. So, I mean, but, again, you know, and I'm kind of, I'm going on memory, but looking at the figure that I think is in the budget, I think was more reflective of what Mr. Kramer's position was closer to, you know, the end of his tenure with us. And, you know, I wouldn't think, unless you just found somebody that had scattered experience and that, you know, in all likelihood, you'd be, I don't think you'd be bringing somebody that would be, you know, that high.
Patrick, I'm sorry, I'm just adding to the same thing. We would want them to have some PR experience, some other experience, and I would think some technology experience as well.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's, that's a really good point, and I'm glad you mentioned that, that if, you know, if, you know, if the board feels very strongly that, you know, in addition to the virtual programs component, that we want PR to be part of that job description as well, then that's going to change what our posting looks like, obviously, as well. To your point, we're going to be looking for somebody that has, you know, experiences or some background in, you know, all of those areas. Yes, it's a good point.
So, before we would look to hire somebody, what would be the way that we form kind of our staff commitment to the planning process of this? Would that just be you and then volunteers from the teachers' ranks? Or would that be a paid stipend, maybe closer to what Option Two looks like? What, what is that looking like, do you think, at this point?
Are you saying like in terms of, like, like, starting out now for planning? Like, before we even hire a position? Is that what you're talking to? So, so in terms of, you know, the teacher component, already have teachers that, you know, have volunteered and said, "Patrick, you know, I would want to be a part of this." Those meetings, we would schedule after school. You know, that's, that's when those meetings, you know, would happen to, you know, talk about it, you know, and, you know, that kind of thing. And, you know, right now, and I've, I've pretty much spoken to, you know, several different people, like Dan and Missy know that they're an integral part of the process as tech coaches, so they would be a part of that guiding coalition. I've already talked to Dr. Miller about wanting to ensure that she remains, you know, a very integral part of this process because of how she has shepherded the program, you know, up until this, you know, point. We have a school counselor, Mr. Refever, at the high school, who was part of Dr. Miller's original team, which Mrs. Pajer was also on. And so I think, you know, certainly, the members that were on that original team, we would look to continue to keep involved in the process. And, and then, I would think since this also has a curriculum connection, you know, just like Mrs. Pajer's been involved through the tech piece, we look to involve Mrs. Hacker as well, you know, you know, moving forward because it has, you know, a more direct, more connection for her.
I guess I'll stop the dummy on the mic at this point, but I, I, you know, I'll say, for myself, I think I'm willing to keep this in the budget at this point, but my preference would be to start out at that Option Two, before adding a full-time administrative position, because I think once we add it, there's no way it's ever been changed. So, that would be my preference, but I'm willing to keep the full figure in the budget at this point. Might want to trend it downwards maybe a little bit, but.
I'm sorry, I'm having a side block.
Okay.
Other questions?
Patrick, I just had a, a quick question.
Sure.
Have you, have, do you know of any districts that maybe have gone about this hiring process, or this administrative process, maybe in a different way? And one way I was thinking about was, I mean, you've got two parts of this. You know, one is really developing the program and getting it started, which requires, I think, a fairly high level of expertise, maybe to some degree. And then there's the, once it's in place, there's the ongoing management and maintenance of the program. I mean, somebody to supervise and stay on top of it. To me, maybe two different skill sets. And I'm wondering, I don't know, you know more about this than I do. I'm just wondering, posing the question, you know, whether or not there would be some, other districts have maybe ever considered the option of contracting initially, to have an expert come in and actually get a program up and running? You know, somebody who absolutely knows how to do these things expertly? And then that contract expires, and then we hire somebody to come in and actually operate, maintain the program?
Yeah, you know, I'm not, I'm not familiar with, with districts that have gone about it that way. You know, I'm not adverse to doing a little bit of research, so that we make sure we consider all options. And, and I, you know, I don't in any way whatsoever mean to come all arrogant at all, so please don't take it this way, but, you know, in my previous district, we, we started with nothing, and I kind of shepherded the virtual academy, and eight years later, we had close to two hundred kids, and we had cut our cyber charter numbers in half. And so, while I don't want to put myself in a pedestal and say that I'm an expert, I've, I've certainly lived this process from infancy, you know, all the way to, to a vibrant program. And in, in terms of that piece, I think if we found the right individual who, you know, had the skills to be able to manage and handle the day-to-day logistics of the program, things like, you know, working with the content providers, making sure kids get into the next course when they finish a course, doing enrollment meetings, you know, you know, working on communicating with families, getting the word out, those kinds of things. If we could find somebody that had that skill set, I'd feel very confident that through my experience, I could assist, you know, with, with the other piece.
Well, we did our research, and went out to the other districts. One district, our visor, has an assistant principal that's given a stipend to do this. They, they all did, as Patrick said, they built it themselves. We went down to Toba Hocken, and they used a teacher on a leave situation. That's been the experiences that we've seen through all the programs that we've looked as well.
I, I, I mean, I think, and it's, you know, while it's not necessarily fleshed out, you know, in more detail, you know, with, with Option One, you know, what I think could be a real home run in that kind of position would be if we have a teacher currently employed at Exeter Township Senior High that has an admin cert and has a passion for this particular area like I do, that could step in already with an understanding of the culture, you know, in the building, and, you know, really can help in terms of, you know, selling it and getting buy-in. That was a huge piece, and it, working at Alanco, we had a tech coach that was kind of taking the lead, and he was so highly respected in the building, that folks got on board really, really quickly. And so, you know, I think if we, I mean, you know, I think like that would be kind of, you know, an ideal scenario if, if, you know, that individual is there and has interest.
We, we, Patrick, you mentioned the ETA. Could we hear tonight from the Teachers Association, how they feel about it? Is that possible?
Sorry about that.
Michelle, she's there.
Thank you. I think the Teachers Association is, I'm involved in this committee as well too, because I think I, I want the teachers to be part of the, part of the solution, not just sitting back. We are the frontline employees, I've always said that, Patrick understands that too. We know what's going on in the classrooms, and a lot of our teachers. Online is probably going to be definitely a benefit to our district. I think it's going to add a lot of value to our education. I think it's going to add a lot of value to courses that, you know, students can not necessarily take. For example, you know, my son has a full course for next year, but he also wants to take Spanish Three. He can't fit that into the schedule, into his schedule, so I see online might be a possibility for him. So, it offers a lot of opportunities for our students. On a separate note, for the administrative piece of it, I think, and this is my. On a separate note though, for the administrative piece of it, I think, and this is my opinion, that I, the teachers, the teachers who have the administrative certification, who are passionate, like Patrick said, about this, about being the administrator for this type of program, they should be considered, or they should be part of it, definitely. Because they know what's going on in the classroom, they understand what's going on in the classroom, they know how to translate that into online as well too. Hiring somebody from the outside to come in as an consultant, they don't understand our, our, our culture here at Exeter. They don't understand, you know, what we actually do at the high school. And also giving those responsibilities to the principal, our principals at the high school are, they're amazing. They're really good at what they do and everything, but throwing something else on them, it's never, it's not a good thing. It's never going to reach its potential. So I think you need to have somebody who knows the classroom, who knows the culture of our community, understands what our needs are in our, at the high school, who will actually better service our, our, our students. And that's the bottom line. We want to make sure that our students actually have everything that they need in order to be successful in the world, in the real world. After they graduate, what are they going to need? And that's important. And I think we have a number of teachers at the high school who have their administrative cert, who also do online, who have done, landed in classrooms already in their own classrooms, have taken the initiative, that they can actually lead this project. They can actually do it and work well where Patrick was wanting to go.
Michelle, how do you feel about them also encompassing other roles like PR or safety in schools, that kind of thing?
I, you know, I think this particular role, I think that they need to just focus on the online learning. We have principals and we have experts who can deal with safety, but they also deal with other issues that are in the, in the buildings. I think this particular person should just focus just on the online learning. How can we take our education, how can we take our students to the next level? I mean, I'm a traditionalist. I love the classroom learning, I do. But I also recognize the fact that there is going to be, there are ways, there are things that are going on in college right now as online learning, and we need to need that as well too. It's never going to replace the traditional online classroom, I'm not online classroom, sorry. It's never going to, it's never going to replace the traditional classroom. It's going to be an additive to it. That's all it is. And I think Dr. Miller will tell you too, not everybody is successful in online learning. It's not, they're not. But this is a way for us to offer different alternatives to our students and also be cost-effective too. And honestly, as a taxpayer in this community, I'm sorry, Patrick, I'm thinking how we're, but as a taxpayer in this community, I am sick and tired of having our tax dollars go towards charter schools, go towards cyber schools, when I know that our education in this district, in actual buildings, home teachers, is more valuable than anything. So I don't know, as a taxpayer, that's how I see it. And honestly, my, my son has had a number one education process in this, in this district. His teachers have been awesome. They, I would love to say that I would love to take all the credit for who he is right now, but I can't. His teachers have a lot to do with that as well too. He's taking AP classes, he's taking honors classes, and he's been selling in those, and it's not because of me, it's because of his teachers. And that's because of the teachers at Exeter. And that's why I feel so passionate about it. I'm sorry, I'm just going online. Okay, so. But again, I think that the administrative piece of it for, for our online, if we're going to do this, has to come from a teacher. It has to come from somebody who's going to be certified as an administrator and actually understands the classroom too. Sorry, Patrick.
No, you're good, thank you.
So, a question that I'm going to have.
Yeah.
Would be, under the administrator thing, it seems like number three would be a bad idea because the, from what I see, from what I understand, the assistant principals at the high school have their plates full already.
I would agree with that. I was just trying to give a.
Plus, plus when we add in that my buddy Christie just shook off that whole thing. As you were saying, number three, she was going like this at night. So, I would say it's, I think, I think number one is a really expensive option. I think number two probably is the best move.
At least to start with.
Yeah, at least to start with. So, one thought that I had was, you're talking about a PR angle for this. Don't we have PR people in this district already?
No one specifically to do PR work.
I mean, I mean, ultimately, you know, PR items, I guess you would say, you know, would, you know, fall under the office superintendent, assistant superintendent, you know, like what happened with graduation, you know, was our responsibility to get that information out, communicate that, which is, which is fine.
Are you, are you, like the Twitter stuff and the Facebook stuff?
Facebook.
We put that on, Joe, Mr. Winters.
Facebook, Facebook website, you know, connected phone and email, not Twitter, not yet. I'm not well-versed enough in Twitter, but.
Like when we had the kindergarten carnival and the STEM fair and stuff like that, again, is that your type of, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it goes out through social media and so forth.
Yeah.
But we don't have someone on a daily basis who's out there, as Mr., or excuse me, Dr. Winters, who mentioned about the branding and being out there really pushing, not only other issues, this issue.
Going to schools when there are events happening, calling the local newspaper, like, you know, some of those, you know, kinds of things.
So does, with a new high school principal coming in, A, does he have any experience in this area helping to build something like this? And B, is he like charging hard or is he into?
Yeah, he, he actually was a Classrooms for the Future coach. That was a program that was pushed heavily by the state. It goes back maybe about ten years, but it was kind of the first big push for technology educate, for, you know, weaving in technology into the classroom kind of before the whole one-to-one thing came into being. So he was a CFF coach at one point in his career, very passionate about technology. So I would say yes, you know, in terms of a principal coming in, you know, he's going to be someone that's going to very much be on board with this. And I will also say I've had numerous side conversations with Jason Dean. I know Jason feels strongly about this, so, you know, that's, you know, and, you know, I haven't talked to Ted about it, but I know for sure, you know, Tom and Jason both feel very strongly about something along those lines.
And I can assure you, I've had conversations with Mr. Campbell and discussed the vision that we have for the district going forward as far as virtual, and he is excited about it.
I just wanted to add a quick side note, and Mike might have some insight on this, but I don't think, just from the outset, that we should think about this being a security position as well. I don't, I don't understand how we would be able to find somebody with the skill set that they both understand instructional support, technology, PR, and then also security. Well, I, I think cybersecurity is more handled by the technology department, but I think he meant security as in a general coordinator. Would you say that that's fair?
I don't think that's fine, your person can do all that higher.
Well, Dr. Miller is getting out.
To be fair though, I mean, Dr. Miller now is basically our security person, and I don't know what training she's had. So I mean, we're, this person would be similarly following the model that she has. She is the coordinator of it right now, so this person would assume that responsibility.
But that's, is that in her job description? Or is that more?
Director of People Services, yes.
You would catch that.
You know, but I, you know, but I will say too, like, you know, where I was previously, my title was Director of, you know, Curriculum and Instruction. I'd say sixty to seventy percent of what I did was online. It was part of my job description, but it was a, so, I mean, I think everybody in education anymore in, you know, their job description is, you know, picking up, you know, additional assignments as districts recognize that, you know, the purse strings get tighter and we have to do more with less in all of those things.
I was just wondering, how many students are in the virtual program this past year or in the virtual program?
You know, Supportive Cyber School is here in the building. It's roughly about twenty students and in our VDA program, it's about ten students. It does change, just comes and goes a little bit, but that's roughly about the numbers that we have right now. You know, Supportive Cyber School is here in the.
Can I ask a follow-up?
They're full-time in the, in the program.
They're, they're full-time in the program, yes.
Follow-up to that, are, does that offer an entire range of coursework or is that just core courses, like regular English?
Entire range from AP courses to elective to core courses to key student courses to media courses, yes.
So, Patrick, on about roughly four thousand students, you were start off by originally saying that we had, which is true, that we got involved with the Brandywine program because we wanted to retain students in our district and therefore reduce the outflow of tech dollars. So, right now, we have, what, we're saying we have thirty students that are basically using some form of a cyber program. So, we're not really, you know, it's not, we're not looking to retain two hundred students or three hundred, so maybe outflow for future purposes. But is this more of sort of an enriched experience versus just retaining?
Yeah, I, you know, I think that's a great point. I mean, I think, you know, yes, big picture, it's more to, you know, to enrich the comprehensive educational program of Exeter Township School District and providing more options and allowing students to be able to customize. But an indirect benefit of doing that is you're going to have less students that are going to want to explore cyber as an op, like cyber charters as an option because there's more flexibility granted to them for how they want to learn and how they want to build their schedule. So, it's definitely a fringe benefit for sure.
And we've talked about like homebound, there's much more uses to this than just what we're presenting right now, but we're trying to focus on this just.
Well, and also too, I just wanted to bring forward that over the five years and compare benefits as well, the fringe benefits have been significant from the small amount that I've been able to work on, the team that I have here in the district. I was just pulling some numbers off of my record. We were kind of approaching one point five million dollars going out in cyber charter as far as tuition. And we have now, as of last year's number, it was just under a million. It was a broken chart that had, you know, broken down by five hundred thousand, so it was under a million. So, you know, we are probably experiencing about thirty to thirty-five percent reduction in out-of-district cost, in out-of-pocket cost of kids going to cyber charters. So this is a significant number that we've been able to keep here because of programs we've been able to have here. You know, and we reduce students that are leaving by about forty percent. We had an upward trajectory five years ago, and we were kind of hit at about one fifteen, one twenty, and we are now definitely going down. So, offering online, you know, opportunities for the kids, parents are asking for this. You know, a lot of things offering at school, the kids are dealing with a lot of things, they want options, and they're needing to go to cyber charters. And one thing that I talk to Jason about too is that I really feel passionately about this. We have to so compete with the charter cyber, cyber charter schools that can advertise. And, you know, we need to get our brand out there. We need to let the community know and the people know what we have to offer, how good it is, we keep developing it more and more. We need to get our brand out there and be as competitive. And that's why someone who knows social media, someone who knows branding, somebody who knows inside and out is going to help promote this, because I'll tell you, we've been doing this and I know zero about that stuff. That is not my wheelhouse whatsoever. And, you know, if we've been kind of keeping it under wraps, I would, we've been growing it. So we would actually put this out there and open it to more students and let more of the community know about it. I think we'd get more and more students and parents would want to keep their kids here for the options that we have. So there is a pretty significant dollar being involved in this. And that's why, you know, teacher, a teacher from the high school, I told you, Michelle, somebody could do that, but that, we could outgrow option two rather quickly. I think we should be hoping to outgrow option two rather quickly because it's going to be somebody who, who needs to really, there's so many components of it that have to be really shepherded to somebody to focus on it, to get us moving forward as quickly as we'd like to.
And there are trainings we can send the people to for some PR, to learn how to do that marketing piece.
And Dr. Miller, your students that you have in the cyber school, are those all special needs students?
No, no, these are not special needs students. The students up at the high school that make up a few of the courses are emotional support students, and that's been able to allow us to keep our emotional support students here. But our Supportive Cyber School that's here and our VDA program that's online, that's regular ed specialized students. It's a mixture, it's a regular ed education program. And I do have to thank Mrs. Peja, she's come to all of our meetings this year on this committee for, you know, kind of starting this forward in this event.
Well, e- even with emotional support, if we have to, you know, I think we would farm those children out. It would be far more costly.
Typically, we've kept them here or we've kept them because we can be able to, you know, blend it up for some classes in class and some online learning, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank God. I want, I just want to have that clarified because I know that that is saving the district a lot of money because of, you know, your initiative and, and what you're doing there.
Dr. Miller, when you were saying opening it up to the larger community, were you alluding to students outside of Exeter School District? And generally, is that an option that you see that?
Well, it can be, yeah, it absolutely can be.
We have the InteD students here and we have filled them for seats in our Supportive Cyber School. We represent the district's community, so if they want to send a student to our, say, Supportive Cyber School, it's here in this building, it's a, you know, program, we can build them for that, yes.
And again, we're trying not to get too far ahead of ourselves with homebound and selling slots and things like that. We're trying to get it started, but this is how quickly it can move.
Yeah, it, it really starts to, starts to grow.
Well, I understand that point, and I think what's troubling to me is that this is going to be an expensive expansion, but if it's got an opportunity to add revenue to the district, that's a significant consideration for this position.
So what is, what is the action? What are we looking to do now to, you know, move forward or debate or to take some sort of an action to encourage this? What is, what is the board's stand?
I would be looking for which one of those three options the board would like to have us move forward with in terms of the administrative piece, and then I would take that and begin moving forward with.
Yeah, I would think we're not looking for any answer tonight, or we're looking for some, you've given us some information to come back with it, with an answer for us next week, which would then let us move forward with whatever we've got going forward. And again, as, as Dr. Winters said, we're not looking to bring the person on right now, but we are looking to have that person on at some point, late fall, early winter, so we can start moving in the direction where that person could start, sort of taking some, some other responsibilities away from Dr. Winters and Dr. Miller and kind of take the program over and work with the council.
So I understand that we don't have this position, or some variation of this position in the budget tonight, but it would be helpful just, just to be able to see a first-year pro forma, even if it's, I don't expect it to be a revenue generator, I don't, but it just would be helpful to understand the budget impact of moving forward in some capacity.
All right, I will work on that. I'll have something for you.
Okay.
And I guess if we're going to do that, we would look at option one and two and throw out option three.
Okay.
Right?
I think that's fair.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Winters, for the presentation. See you tomorrow. Okay, we're going to move on in the agenda. We have another presentation this evening, and Mrs. Gaisch is going to walk us through our 2018-19 budget with the general fund, food services, capital projects, in consideration of a lot of decisions we have to make at the voting meeting next Tuesday.
Okay, I provided you, in addition to the PowerPoint, detail on revenue, expense by object. And I also gave you a couple of samples of comparative data that we've been looking at from a Protocol Five site and some benchmark data. Going forward, we'll be using this data, you know, as things on enrollment, staffing, and also to give the school board kind of like a dashboard going forward, maybe every month, providing you with something that could help you, you know, understand the district better and help us as administrators to evaluate what our budget's looking like. And that, you know, next year as we go along each month, we can build the budget, you know, looking at staffing, enrollment, the different categories, expense, and next year when we get to this point, you know, we'll have a, everyone will have a good feel about really what the budget is all about. I mean, I have a good feel about this budget, but some of you have just been, you know, working on this for a few months. And anyway, tonight I'm going to present an update. Things do change between May and June, and I'm going to go through those things. Again, summary of. Again, summary of revenue, since May, we received our, May, in early June, we received our business privilege tax, delinquent, transfer tax, those are monthly collections that come to us. Business privilege tax increased significantly in May compared to May a year ago. And I'll, you know, share a little bit of that later. So, that number, the estimate, I am increasing local revenue by three hundred seventy-five thousand because delinquent went up as well and interest income. And again, some of the repeats of what I've shared before. We have the states, the governor's money in the budget. I really don't have an update for you on that. Transportation subsidy, in our preliminary calculation of our subsidy, it's actually up. We built the budget assuming that they were going to reduce our subsidy, but they did not. There was talk about that, but they did not do that. So, you can see mercantile tax or business privilege, I'm increasing that to seven hundred fifty thousand. So, from budget to where we are now, two hundred nineteen thousand more. I'm not increasing next year's budget because some of those collections were prior year delinquent, one-time collections. They're doing audits now, so we are, you know, reaping the benefits of more aggressive collections for business privilege, privilege tax. Delinquent are up, Exeter Plaza is catching up on their delinquent tax payments and interest income. Our rates that we're getting now, we're with PNC and PSLAB, have increased by about sixty-five, fifty to sixty-five percent since the July. So, I did not increase it for next year, other than to make it equal. I've been in discussions with PSLAB on what they think's gonna happen to short-term rates. So, right now, that's a little conservative. Transportation, again, we budgeted about almost nine hundred thousand. We're actually gonna get about a little bit over a million. And again, social security and your retirement are driven by changes in wages. So, as I made changes to wage and expenses, I really, flows through here. One of the biggest changes since May was, I've added something called extended, proceeds from extended term financing. Joe Wei, it's his recommendation now to, rather than do a strict rental of the Chromebooks, to go back to a lease purchase, so that at the end, it's a dollar buyout at the end of a four-year term, we have those Chromebooks. He got a recent quote last week for Lenovo's, which is a more durable machine than the Dell that we talked about in May. So, but because you are really purchasing, whether you are doing a lease purchase, paying over a four-year term, you have to recognize the revenue and you also have to recognize the expense. And that impact to the bottom line is zero, but it's an accounting thing, you have to show it on both sides. Because we will be recording the asset in the year that these are purchased, which will be July. So, all in all, you know, revenue is up this year, which is a good thing. Next year, it's a hundred seventy-three thousand, no tax increase. I've added some slides, I've tried to put different slides together so that you have something which gives you the whole picture. And I'll probably, you know, speed through some of these because you've seen them before. We got our April interims during the month of, of May, and they were eight hundred some thousand versus two hundred some thousand. So, I ticked it up a little bit in our assessed value, you know, to, I added seventeen thousand more in, not retax revenue, so forty-four million in property tax revenue. And you can see that on the detail sheets of the revenue. So, forty-four million, twenty-seven thousand. And keep in mind, I'm also still accounting for, there is a large assessment appeal going on right now, and that's kind of in the middle road where we might settle at that point. We're not near any settlement, but I have to be a little conservative in budget, assuming that we might settle and May would be retroactive to July one. Earned income tax, again, upward trend, no change. I checked the, the trend in the recent collections, but it is a positive trend. Transfer tax, I'm very comfortable with those numbers as well. For this year and next year, investment income, you know, we did, we are seeing increases. The banks we work with through PSLAB are offering higher short-term rates. Business privilege tax, we received two hundred seventy-one thousand in May compared to only eight hundred five thousand in May two thousand seventeen. So, I have increased it for this year and because a hundred some thousand is one time, I kept next year as is. This is some information from Five Site, just kind of, you know, let you know in some areas how we stack up. These are the districts, in addition to Exeter, that have business privilege tax. And it's looking at two thousand seventeen. Just gives you an idea of, you know, where we are and what we can generate. And what's also important about this is we met with the Chamber of Commerce a few months ago, these school districts, because they were making the point that, you know, businesses don't, you know, that, that keeps them from coming into your district, business privilege tax. But our point is, and especially those that have so much more than we do, is that it is a considerable amount of revenue for these school districts, which is why we would, you know, resist considering ever doing a wave of that.
Excuse me, so that was the revenue per student generated by the business tax?
Right. They basically look at your total revenue and then divided by the number of students, average, average daily membership.
And? And would, would we even be able to get rid of business privilege tax? I didn't think that that was under our authority to levy or not levy one. I, I thought that that was completely under the township's purview.
I would have to look, I mean, there was an act back in the eighties, and the school district did their own. I would really have to, you know,
Okay, all right, maybe.
Get legal advice on that. But I never went down that road because I.
Say, I said, since we did our own, we should be able to undo it. Well, if we did our own, yeah, that would make sense, but it was my understanding that municipalities levied it and then had to share equally, similar to the earned income tax.
So, again, the drivers of the changes in the local sources, assessed value, we do have a decline out the gate for next year, but we are using a higher collection rate. Again, I've already talked about all of these things, so go to the next slide. And here are some data, you know, sometimes I like to see how do we stack up or measure up against other districts. And what I've looked at here, and this is two thousand seventeen data, is our local revenue. And we are pretty much on average, sixty-nine point three percent versus sixty-three point one seven, which is the, is the average of our total. Local is that percentage of our total operating revenue. And I'm looking at it in terms of dollars per student. Again, you know, we are on average. Moving on to the state sources of revenue, I provide you with all the data here, but obviously, the biggest areas of increase are going to be the retirement contribution. We're up at to five point eight million, you know, ten years ago, seven hundred thousand. So, this is the one that is growing the most. And the rate next year is thirty-three point four three of wages. Basic education subsidy, small changes over time. Special education subsidy fluctuates. Some, some years, we will get contingency funding, but again, next year, about fifty some thousand. This is another chart of, which illustrates how, over time, our expenses have gone up. That's the orange bar, whereas the blue represents the amount of revenue. So, obviously, that has not kept, kept up with what our expenditures are. We're all aware of that. I do wanna point out this two thousand sixteen-seventeen, that's the year where there was considerable effort made to bring students back into our program. And also, those that were using cyber charter, if they did have an IEP, came back to use our programs as well. Again, this, again, shows you retirement reimbursement, five point million a year. These are some additional benchmarks, you know, looking at state revenue. Our state revenue is twenty-nine percent of our total operating revenue compared to an average of thirty point five one. Looking at it in terms of dollars, again, we're a little bit below the average. Moving on to expenditures, what's on the, in the resolution is expenses seventy-six million, seven hundred nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-nine. Minor changes to the estimate for this year. I will talk about the changes that I made to the eighteen-nineteen budget for this presentation, but overall, the expense is going up three point seven million, four five point one percent. Majority of that is in wages and benefits. Quickly, seventeen-eighteen expenditures, just a decrease of twenty-eight thousand. Really just going through, we received information on our June first subsidy payment, basic education subsidy payment, and in that, there are deductions for approved private school tuition costs. We budgeted an amount, ours was a little higher than we budgeted. And these really are students placed in an APS, but we're receiving sixty percent funding. And they deduct forty percent from our subsidy for the payment, and it always occurs the following year. We also received our information on the IU payment we have to make for the transportation the IU provides. Well, that's primarily right now, early intervention students. So, that's all new information that came in, and I have updated the estimate, but very minor, twenty-eight thousand dollar decrease. Looking at eighteen-nineteen, again, the majority, the largest part of the budget is the wages and the benefits, you know, over seventy-one percent. And again, looking at the change that I've made since May, when you adopted the proposed final budget, and I'll go through these in a little more detail. Overall, an increase of a hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred seventy-two. So, lots of, you know, reductions and then other increases that have occurred. I mentioned earlier about the Chromebook lease, recognize the source of revenue, but also recognizing the, the cost of the asset. It's actually two hundred ten thousand, the number changed a little bit as of Friday. So, wages, we took out, there have been some changes in discussions about placements of a couple of students coming in from early intervention. We've changed the budget to reflect that they would be placed outside the district and that we would not use a full-time behavioral support professional, but actually do contracting out of services. I had a physician in for senior high, I took that out. And for this presentation, that open physician, because there, you know, I knew there was gonna be discussion on different scenarios, just wanted to have you look at, you know, what it looks like with these physicians out and what new staff is actually still in the budget. We received our final rate on our healthcare premium, nine and a half percent, up from eight and a half percent. And also, we had open enrollment going on and people choosing to waive benefits, probably the professionals or administrators, and we have that final count. So, and based on who we removed, this is the line is, so a hundred fifty thousand, a hundred eighty-four are removed from wages and benefits. There are some changes in classification of conferences, I'm really not gonna go into that. It's just a shift between categories. And as I mentioned, because contracted behavioral support consultant position was taken out, excuse me, behavioral support professional teacher, we are putting in the consultant cost. So, that's a new increase, a net increase of eighty-one thousand, that should be net, not new.
So, then, Ann, should, does one hundred in wages, does that reflect that eighty-one thousand?
This is in.
So, should that be a hundred and three is what I'm asking?
Here, no, this.
So, one eighty-four minus the eighty-one.
If you are, well, when I get to the next slide, I'll be able to explain it better in more detail. We also decreased occupational therapy and physical therapy because the, two students, which are now gonna be early intervention placed outside, we did not need as much OTPT. So, in looking at all of the detail for object three hundred, the net is an increase of eighty-one thousand in that category. And I'm just going to.
So, maybe Sue can answer this question, but, you know, we spent a lot of time this year talking about school safety, and I see that we're gonna eliminate a behavioral support position. Would that impact our ability to assist those kids who need support, who could become, you know, troublesome at some point, you know, if, if we don't have support for them on-site?
What we were looking at, we have, we're pretty much maintaining the current behavioral support that we've been having with the district over the last about two years. We were going to, because we were gonna open a new office of support classroom, we, we looked at the cost benefit of contracting versus having our own employee. And so, we looked at, we would have to pay so much for contracting, we would be able to better financially to have actual employees. But because we decided that classroom was not being opened because the students are going out of district because of love and love for needs, we just kind of rewrote it back to what we had originally. So, we're only taking out something we thought we were anticipating a much higher need because of another office of support classroom that we're not opening right now. We'll be opening it by next year because of the early intervention students that are coming in. So, you're obviously back in the vise, we're gonna be looking almost like a swap-out, but I think almost as Jerry had said, from a contractor to a teaching, an actual contracted, a teaching physician here because of the cost, the cost would just play off that way. But they do, behavioral specialists now does provide support to our students in special education. And then occasionally, a principal might call and say, hey, can that, can that person stay in the student assistance team or an IST team and give our teachers more support? And that person does do that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so in terms of the behavioral support consultant, I added back fifty thousand. We had taken that out. Another version, we were gonna hire this, the BCBA. Since this is out now, fifty thousand goes back into that consulting. But the OTPT, we will not need as much for that, in that area, because of. But the OTPT, we will not need as much for that, in that area, because of these students attending elsewhere. Again, the purchase services, which includes lease rental, I reduced that, but you'll see it later in principal and interest. Because now we will make principal and interest payments versus rent payments. Five hundred category, which is the tuition, other purchase services, an increase of about two hundred seventy-five thousand. Again, these placements, contract carrier, if we have to transport the students, we will incur possibly, if we can't do it, contracted transportation, additional. Athletic insurance is up, the private placements of three students, which includes two early intervention, one who just moved in and is, will, the home will settle June twenty-ninth and they're attending Hogan, and they will continue in that placement. And then we have a special ed agreement which is expiring and received information from Dr. Miller that it may, there may be another one for tuition costs at sixty thousand dollars. So these are things that do change on a daily basis and they're so significant that I have included that in this presentation. And again, this is just an accounting thing, we account for conferences out of three twenty-four, not five eighty-one. This is, this is PDE, the controller's office, really telling us how to record things. Utilities reduced by one hundred seventeen thousand. Speaking with Dolphin Electric, doing, that's doing the LED project for this year, assuming the project's done at the end of August, I reduced electricity by one hundred and eight thousand. Math software, they've gotten firm pricing, I brought down what they had in the budget by a little over seventeen thousand. Mentioned earlier about the technology, recording the asset at two hundred ten thousand. The interest of the principal, rather than paying rent, it goes down into the eight hundred, nine hundred object. So these are the staff positions that are in this presentation of the budget. Increasing two administrators from two twenty to two twenty-eight based, due to their, the demands and needing more time. We have our autistic support classroom opening up at the junior high. And we also need three autistic support aides for a class at Jackson Wall, but we're using a teacher that we already have for that class. Am I correct on that, that dilemma?
I believe, if you're autistic support, the aides would be for the new classroom?
For the, for the new classroom, right, okay. And a general maintenance position, which was a recommendation from a recent facility committee meeting. This is the, that open position, which from the number that I, I've given you for expenditures, it's not in there right now. As we talk about it this week, we'll figure out if any, if a certain amount needs to be added back. Wages and benefits are the largest part of the budget. Just want to give you, you know, more detail on what makes up that thirty-two million. Administrators, we have twenty-seven positions, three percent increase based on the agreement. Professional staff, which includes all the teaching, psychologists, guidance, technology positions, three hundred and one positions. That's twenty-two million, five, seven, five hundred seventy-eight thousand, administrators, two point eight million. The average increase for the teachers, you know, including their column movement, and what the schedule increases are is about three percent. And again, I mentioned one autistic support teacher. These support professional staff, there are currently one hundred fifty-five full-time and one hundred forty-two part-time. Some of our support staff assume a couple of part-time positions. So it's not headcount, it's more of positions. That's five point seven million of the wage budget, average increase, three point one five percent. And I already reviewed the physician requests for next year, the physicians. Our extracurricular bodies, six hundred six thousand, and then we have tax collectors. So those are the major pieces of our wage budget of thirty-two million. Benefits, seven point seven million, healthcare, life insurance, disability, one percent increase in healthcare. But we also had some reductions. If I remove those staff positions, it reduces it by fifty-three thousand. Waiver, employees choose to waive our healthcare and go on a spouse's plan. And we got the update recently and it increased to about forty-one. So it was an additional eighty thousand savings to the healthcare expense. But looking at the whole waiving opportunity by itself, comparing to not having that in the prior contract, the net impact to the budget is a savings of five hundred fifty thousand. This is after they get, received twenty percent in their wages for these savings to the district. So that really has helped the budget. So the net impact to the healthcare line, you know, a reduction of sixty thousand. These are the rates that employees pay toward their healthcare. Administrative staff thirteen and a half percent, effective July one, support staff five and a half percent. And again, social security and retirement driven by wages. Dental, again, our projected cost for next year is three hundred fifty thousand, or it's about seven hundred eighteen per eligible employee. And we are self-insured, we have annual maximums and co-pays in the plan. X-wipes again, support professionals will have this through six thirty twenty, but it's setting for professional staff. So looking at the annual cost, next year's budget, one hundred forty-five thousand versus three hundred eighty thousand. So again, another area of savings due to contract negotiations. Tuition reimbursement, we're at a level, a level of about one hundred five thousand compared to, you know, a couple of years ago, two hundred twenty thousand. So they, those are things that really have helped the budget. Workers' compensation insurance, we received our premium today, about three o'clock. And it's two hundred thirty thousand compared to about two hundred ten for this year. The reason the projection's two hundred forty-five, and I haven't changed it, we have a five thousand dollar deductible. Our exposure this year is about thirty thousand. So we maybe, you know, it's going to be tight next year in this category. And this, this is our experience mod. I believe the original proposal was about two hundred forty thousand that Brook Street gave us. And our agent was able to get it down to two hundred thirty thousand, our experience mod. You know, we still have some challenges in some areas.
What does that mean?
Well, they, they actually look at, you know, a four-year period and, you know, this, you really, that, your premium will be based, you know, on that-
So is that showing an increase-
Yeah, it, it showed the increase from, yeah, sixteen seventeen, right.
Potential to use the insurance because of somebody who got hurt on the job? Is that what that is?
It, it's showing that your, your claims were higher. And you really were, yeah, your claims were higher, basically.
Because more people were getting hurt on the job.
Right. So are we doing anything to try and remedy people being a little bit safer on the job, rather than- Well, sure, we, we meet quarterly, and Diane Scarnavaki and Christine Wheelan are communicating all the time.
You know, we have a work comm company that comes out and they review our claims. The actual uptake, excuse me, uptick, was we had two employees that had a high cost. They'll be coming off the books as of this year, but unfortunately, when they look at the averages going for next year, that will impact our numbers going next year, it will be higher.
Yeah, and we do, there's one area that, in the autistic support classrooms, you know, the aide or the teacher may be in the wrong spot at the wrong time and when the student, there've been a couple where they've been hit, you know. So, but, you know, these aides do receive training, obviously the teachers receive training, but those are, those things occur. Retirement incentives are in the contracts, second personal day payout, years of service retirement, estimating three hundred nine thousand, it's based on who can retire. I track that, doesn't mean that they all will retire, but, you know, they are superannuated and if they did, that could be the outlay for it, compared to two hundred forty-five thousand this year. And, you know, I wanted to, since it's the biggest part of the budget, I just wanted to give you more detail, so you know what's really driving our expenses and the increase. Again, comparing, you know, four or five years ago, obviously the retirement piece is taking up so much more of the pie in addition to, to healthcare. And then these other categories obviously are shrinking, because during contract negotiations, everyone realized this was going up so much in retirement, that somehow you have to make room and you have to reduce in other areas, so, you know. I commend the school board members who are on the teams and, and the associations for their cooperation. Expenditures by object, and these are the other categories outside of wage and benefit. And overall, this is just the grand total line, you know, we're not looking at terribly significant increases. You know, looking at this year to next year, again, most of it is in wages and, and benefits. I've already highlighted, you know, some of the areas where private tuition placement amounts are going up, based on what we know right now. And again, our major improvements, we didn't spend all of our capital money because of the timing of all our projects. So that does show a significant increase for next year. Again, more comparisons, just illustrates where we are in terms of instruction. One thousand, that's regular and special ed instruction. We're not overspending, or when you compare to the other districts in the, in the county. The average per student is ten thousand four hundred, we're at ten thousand, one twenty-three. Looking at support services, we are below the average for the county. And support services being your guidance, nursing, all two thousands, business office, principal office. And looking at extracurricular, again, we are pretty much in line with the average. This is just one slide of looking at major functions of expense over a period of time. Okay, how have we been, you know, how have we been performing in different categories? And I only chose to look at these regular ed and through some support services. And the green dot is where we stand, we are below average, we are consistent over the four years. Special ed, we were above, but again, in sixteen seventeen, we went below average because of the steps taken to bring our students back. We're, we're average in, in regular, regular instruction. You'd have to drill down deeper to see why we were a little above average in those two years. It could have been because, you know, purchasing textbooks, technology, when compared to the others. Getting to the bottom line, you know, making the change and increasing the transfer to capital reserve because of the extra revenue we received from business privilege tax, if the board so chooses to approve a transfer, and that's included in this number, this is this year, excessive revenue would be six hundred thousand after the transfer. Typically, we wait after our audit to make the transfer, but I'm including it in the budget presentation because it does flow through to next year. You know, your, your fund balance will flow through. So one point, almost two million of the deficit, after all the changes I summarized, which would bring our fund balance down to seventeen point four, unassigned six point one. And that would be just under eight percent of expenditures, unassigned. Fund balance divided by expenditures would be just under eight percent. If we were to add back that position, the scenario would, would look a little different, the deficit would go up. But again, we have to discuss how much of that would be added back to the budget for next week. So commitments, this is on the agenda, I recommended keeping the commitments the same for next year due to the number of projects that we have going on. You can just ignore this, that used to be a commitment, but I forgot to, to hide these two. These are no longer commitments. So it's basically PESRs, investment appeals, and capital improvements. And the board has to take action on that. Capital projects, no changes since the proposed final in May, using four point four million next year for the projects. This includes all our three funds, we have three different capital project funds, which is a capital reserve. When you make a transfer from general fund, it goes into capital reserve. And that could be used for transportation, technologies, small capital projects. We have funds remaining from Awatne and also two thousand fourteen new money, which was the intent for, for various projects. Food service budget, we are recommending a minor increase in meal prices. It doesn't have a very significant impact on the bottom line, net increase of about a thousand. And these are the, the meal price changes that are being recommended. Jennifer notes that the paid lunch, paid lunch equity tool, you know, requires our meal prices to be averaged close to the reimbursement of two ninety-two. And it's really ensuring that your paid price, students who pay, that any subsidies you're receiving through the state or federal government are not, you know, covering that in any way. But also, it's important to, the cost of everything is going up, you know, food and, you know, anything related to the operation, especially the wages and, and the benefits. So are there any questions?
Do we have any inkling with what we're going to get from the state probably for, for the seventeen eighteen, eighteen nineteen?
Fifty-something thousand, you're talking about basic ed and special education? Special education approximately fifty-some thousand and regular ed is about a little over a hundred thousand. So that's going to be the increase we're dealing with.
That's what we hope.
We hope. We hope, I'm assuming adding the budget.
And we still have not anything definite from her, although they keep saying it's going to be no problem.
Okay, so once we decide about an administrative position, I may make an adjustment to the expense number, but we'll present that ahead of time. That's it?
Okay. There are no further questions, we'll move on. Thank you, Anne. Next part of the agenda, we have a discussion item on Senate Bill ten seventy-eight. Discussion to consider resolution in support of Senate Bill- Uh, discussion to consider resolution in support of Senate Bill, uh, ten seventy-eight, which would expand the permission of executive session discussions to include district security plans. Hunter, I think this was something you wanted to, you wanted to discuss, you want us to consider?
Yeah, um, I just think that this is a common sense, uh, plan. I could go into more detail, but it is nine fifteen and, and untypical fashion of me, I'm very tired. So, I think that this is a really common sense plan, we could have used this, I think, at least on two occasions this year thus far. Um, and I think even with the, you know, that we got today, um, we could probably use it a third ti- we could, if it was in law, could probably have used it a third time now. Um, so I definitely think that this is common sense, and I think it's also limited because it has to present a reasonable likelihood to jeopardize or threaten public safety. Um, and I think this is also not only for school districts, but this is also for municipalities. And being able to maybe even work some of those joint, uh, uh, work some of those joint relationships board to board could even be something, I don't know what I'm saying. I said what I'm.
You're tired.
Yeah, I'm tired.
Yeah, are, is this, um, is this resolution being, um, pushed by any of the school organizations?
I think PSBA supports it, um, that's, I didn't originally see it on PSBA's website. I think it was on Education News, that we, the, the daily one that we get. Um, I believe that PSBA is supporting it, when I looked on their website, I know that PSATs is also supporting it, which is the Pennsylvania Association of Indian Teachers.
Beyond that, they're supporting it, are they, are they, are they promoting, are they actively promoting resolutions among school districts? As they do sometimes.
I can see, I, I think my main interest was for us to send a joint letter from the board to all of our delegation. Um, because I really think that they need to see this in the House, because that's, I believe where it is right now, because I believe it passed the Senate nearly unanimously, if not unanimously.
Yeah, I, I don't see, I see this as kind of a no-brainer as well, I mean, I don't, I, I can't imagine there'd be any opposition to this bill at all. It's a very simple bill, you know, basically excludes any of, uh, any security planning and any of that information, you know, from public, uh, availability and executive sessions, so.
And if the board so wishes, I can reach out to our local legislators, they're really receptive to hearing from the districts on what we want to support, so.
I'm just wondering whether, whether we wanna go the resolution route, or whether we just wanna communicate with our, um, you know, our, uh, local legislators?
I, I would be completely fine if we just did a joint letter. Because I think, um, if we give Dr. Phillips the letter and then he can communicate our wishes over email, and we can send it in form or something like that in the mail, I think, you know, that would be a good combination. And I think it's part of our responsibility to advocate for things that we believe in, and I think that this is probably something I would hope that the entire board would believe in.
I think that's a good point, and does anybody have any, uh, uh, any opposition to that proposal? Okay.
Why'd you look at me?
I always look at you.
You're, you're a transparency guy, man.
Okay, uh, next item is public comments, opportunity for folks in the audience to make any comments at this point. Let's see, none, we'll move on to, uh, the agenda, which includes minutes. We've got, uh, and these are all, we've got three sets of, uh, board minutes that will be, uh, subject to vote next Tuesday. So if anyone has any concerns about that, please let us know. Word policies, uh, we have several, again, as you know, that are, um, up for second reading. Um, the ones that I think are subject to further discussion this evening, if anyone's interested, would be the first reading, uh, policies, those include one, surveys, student assistance program, electronic devices, foreign exchange program, contests, and a law for harassment. Now, I read through each of these, uh, recently, uh, the only one that I think we had some feedback on was electronic devices. We made some minor modifications to that based upon feedback from, I think, our high school, uh, principals, but, uh, we're gonna move some of the language into administrative regulation, but beyond that, I haven't received any feedback, and our attorneys have reviewed these and have, uh, have, uh, agreed that they need no modification. Anybody have comments? Okay, we're gonna move on to business options, Mr. Gallow.
Next week, we'll be voting on numerous items, art supply bid, audit engagement, proposal extension, uh, electricity purchasing, athletic accident insurance, food service meal prices, which Anne detailed earlier, food service department final budget, capital project funds final budget, general fund commitment balances, final general fund budget, our, uh, two thousand eighteen, nineteen per capita tax, real estate mileage rate, which is going to be steady, yay, homestead and farmstead exclusion resolution, and volunteer student accident insurance, as well as Chromebooks, and I think one other thing. I'm sure, two more, three more, four more. Insurance coverage, budget transfers, and appointment of voting delegates to the PSBA delegate assembly.
Can I just speak to that last item? Um, I know Hunter has expressed interest, and his name is on that list. We would be the second, uh, person who would be interested in serving as a PSBA delegate assembly voting person. Pat, you and I did it last year, um, this would be usually if you're gonna be attending the, the PSBA conference, this might be something you would attend as well, um, we need two delegates. Did Pat send an email?
Yeah, I, I, I sent.
Pat, did you send an email?
Yeah, I sent an email saying that I, I, you know, I would go as a delegate, because I know we have two. We have, we can have two delegates.
Okay, that'd be great, so.
Unless someone else would want to.
We'll put you on the agenda for next, uh, for.
Chad, you wanna go?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, well, then I'll, I won't, I won't go there.
You're just gonna go if no one else could go?
Huh?
You were just gonna go if there was no one else?
Yeah, no one else wanted to go, I would go, but you, you can go, I, I'm, I'm, I'm with that.
You can go to the conference, serving as a delegate is somewhat, is, is a different role and function. It's like a, a half-day, from what I can recall, Pat, what was it, the afternoon?
Yeah, that's a half-day.
The afternoon, you sit through a number of procedural things, you vote electronically on some of the proposed platforms. And, um, uh, that, that, it's not a, it's not a longer, uh, involved thing. And, and you can still go to the conference even if you don't participate as a delegate.
But she can go, like, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, she can, she can go for the three days.
This is in October?
Yeah.
I mean, if your employment does not interfere, it won't.
No, she's, she's retired. She's retired.
That's a mark, correct?
Or no, I was. Certainly, I think it's nice to give somebody else a chance back.
Yeah, I think, hey, that's fine, I, I just, I just said I would go if no one else wanted to go, but yeah.
I, I intend to go to the conference, but I don't need to serve as a delegate. Um, I, I just also wanted to say, I think these conferences are really good for as many people who can't attend, even if you can only do one day. Um, I attended, uh, the Tenship Supervisors Association Conference, similar to what this one was. And I can tell you that I have definitely applied, uh, what I learned there, um, almost the next day on the job. And I think that we can really benefit from some of these trainings as well.
I agree. Um.
Well, I think, isn't it if you have two delegates, uh, you can't, you can only go as a, you, you can't go as a delegate then? You can just go as a person that wants to go there, or, I mean, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, I mean, there are only two voting people.
Right.
You know, and you don't have to, I, I wouldn't recommend anybody attend, it's a boring activity. I must fall asleep.
I'm, I'm talking about the workshops.
No, the, the, this is, I'm talking about the delegate voting portion of it. The, the actual workshops itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, the conference is completely different, where I see it, and, and so, two different things.
No, I know a lot about it last year.
I hope you, I hope you guys hear more about it than I did.
What did you, what, didn't I do last year?
I, I, I loved the conference.
Oh.
It was the voting delegate.
Well, the voting delegate, yeah, that's.
That was tedious, yeah.
So you should've said all that, you should've said all that before I voted.
You bet, no, you're already on the case.
Clearly, you can't attend for the conference, you don't have to be part of the delegate.
Right.
Is that what I heard?
That's true, yeah.
Sharon, if, if you don't wanna do it, we can nominate Jim. And these types of things, what I think normally happens is the person who is in here getting stuck with it.
I think everybody should go through it, you know. So Pat and I did ours last year, so somebody else has a system.
Because you thought it was interesting, right?
I'm sorry, what?
I said you thought it was interesting.
He's saying he thought it was boring, but this one's.
The voting part.
No, no, I didn't, no, I did, oh, the vote, yeah, you just go to vote, you, all you do is, you know, you go up there on the Friday, or, or, maybe it's the Friday, now, I don't even remember, but, uh.
It's the last thing, very last.
It's the last thing, and, and you just vote on whatever the platform is that they have.
Did you find it to be interesting?
Yeah.
I, I found the conference itself, what, what, I was there for the three days. I, I found it very informative, yes, they have a lot of great things.
Okay, we're gonna move on to personal committee, Mr. Chapina.
Dave, I have one question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, concerning the per capita tax, and, and I'm pretty sure you may have covered this a few minutes ago, but I missed it. How much does that per capita tax bring in?
About a hundred and forty thousand.
Okay, and how much, do, don't the tax collectors get a portion of that or something?
They get the per capita.
Okay, so how much of that hundred and forty do we end up with?
Push the bit.
Oh, let's see.
Isn't it like cents, how much they collect that from?
Rough, rough estimate.
I'm tired, I'm tired.
And tired.
So, okay, uh, okay.
The next question gets tougher, Anne.
Doesn't.
Level two.
Would be easier if we looked it up in Centuria.
Yeah, do that.
Is it the information hundreds of years?
And one more question, uh, about section eight of the resolution. Okay? Um, what does it mean? Because, uh, if any sentence, clause, or section were part of this resolution, is for any reason found to be unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid, and it goes on in, in ways like that, it's hereby declared as the intent of the school board that this resolution would have been adopted and had such unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid sentence clause, section, part thereof not be included herein. How can you pass something that may be illegal or unconstitutional and have it still remain a part of law?
Well, isn't part of that in an effort to make sure that if the state constitution were to be amended in the November election, let's say, um, after we've already passed it? I don't think there's anything up this year, I could be wrong, but I don't think there is. Then that piece could invalidate the whole resolution if we don't put that whole thing in there. So I think in, like.
So it's a disclaimer?
Yeah.
Just a concept?
I think an example, and I'll be really quick about this, in California, I think in the nineties, they passed a resolution to hold all property tax levels at, at the, like, nineteen eighty assessment, and it's gone on since then. So that would have really upset all the resolutions that things like that would have happened, uh, resolutions that were passed dependent on new assessment levels or different things like that. Does that make sense? Is that right, Anne? Did I have that right?
Close enough?
Yes.
Close enough because you both talk.
And this was the farmstead resolution? The homestead, farmstead resolution?
No, uh, no. For the per capita tax.
Oh, the per capita. Is he upstairs?
No, sir.
Mr. Chapina.
Our personnel committee will be taking action on resignations, retirements, appointments, leaves of absence, changes status, we will be, um, lead up effort for now. Course requests, staff conferences, special education extended school year program additions, and summer curriculum revision. We also will be discussing the approval of Mrs. Gaius' contract. And there will be one component of that contract that will be the subject of executive session after this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chapina. Student functions, Mr. Stratt.
Good question.
Am I being a pain tonight?
Good timing, it's a good one.
Um, and on the, uh, on the staff conferences, the, for Jeffries, we have a thing at the end, it's costing nothing, and it's merely listing dates, do we really need to approve his movement?
It's still professional development, and I believe there's an insurance piece to that, where he is, he will be going for pills. There are courses that he has to take. It, it validates that he's leaving in a professional manner, so he's covered, something happened, correct?
I know, and just the fact that he is out of, out of this room.
But I'm ultimately asking, do we, we have to approve that? I- is that a by-law thing? Or, or are we?
That's practice, that's practice.
I also, um, under certified staff, I just wanted to say two things real quick, because I will be calling in next week. I will be here in person, so instead of saying it next week, um, I know. I just wanted to, first of all, um, send good thoughts to Mrs. Burtlett, who I see is resigning. And then also Valerie Bolick, um, she's a good friend of mine, and I told her I was gonna vote no that she couldn't resign. Um, she's moving, she actually is an Exeter graduate, and to best of my knowledge, has been in Exeter, um, since she graduated college, so. I'm feeling emotional, because I don't want her to go, but I wish her the best of luck.
She was my emotional, not my emotional sporty, or my learning sporty teacher in fifth grade.
So, um, I just wondered, the student services, Mrs. Stratt?
Um, next week, we'll be reporting on field trips within a sixty-mile radius, as well as voting on field trips beyond a sixty-mile radius. Um, we'll be voting on the ESY agreement with New Story Schools and Services, as well as agreement with the Deveraux Foundation, ESY agreement with Hogan Learning Academy, agreement with the Pathway School, agreement with the Profession School, tuition agreements with Hogan Learning Academy as well.
Thank you, Ms. Stratt, and we'll move on to recruitment programs, recruitment committee, Mrs. Packer.
Next week, we'll be voting on K to eight math software, Star Reading and Star Math, and Bright Bite Survey.
Great.
I've got one thing.
Uh, yes, Hunter.
That, are you done?
Well, that's the end of the agenda, so, uh, yeah, this would be an opportunity for you to raise your hand.
Okay. Uh, tomorrow, there's gonna be an athletics committee, everybody's invited, it's gonna be awesome. We're gonna have snacks, we're gonna have snacks. Uh, there are several items on the agenda that I'll go through really quick. Um, discussion of the baseball field at the senior high school, discussion of future use of the baseball field, discussion of district activity fee for athletic and extracurricular involvement, discussion of the athletics committee structure, and that's it. But I, uh, wanna invite everybody, um, and you guys, I hope have all received the materials. If you haven't, please let me know, and I'll get them to you.
Hunter's buying pizza. And before we break, I just.
For me, sorry.
Before we break, I just wanna make sure I announce that we're gonna have executive, executive session this evening for both legal and personal matters.
Doctor Denver, I have one thing.
Yes.
Hunter, I was thinking, last night at home, what's going on with your homeschool students coming into, you know, using the district service?
So the, the policy committee has met several times, uh, since the board first gave the direction, I think it was back in January. Uh, the administration is currently working on proposals to work with, uh, I think, the senior high school principal, um, Dr. Miller. Uh, I'm not gonna name all the names successfully, but they're working on bringing a revised draft back to the committee, which would then be brought back to the board.
Including administrative regs.
Okay. So hopefully, it'll be done by the end of the summer.
For next year?
For.
Yeah.
That would be a fight.
Yes.
Well, we'll talk about that one.
No, so no further comments, this being the.